Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the great city of Pembroke Pine, to our commission meeting. Wow, look at the crowd. This is terrific. Roll call, please.
Good evening, Commissioner Castillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Goode.
I'm present.
Breisner Schwartz.
Here.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Commissioner Seiple.
I'm here.
Mayor Ordis.
Here.
City Manager Dodge.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. The Pledge of Allegiance.
We are live on the United States of America. And the Republic of Lincoln stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you. All right. I know why you're all here. You're all here to listen to the mayor of Broward County. Right? Mayor Lamar Fisher is a good friend for a long time, been in the city government, now progressing up to be the great mayor of the Broward County. So Mayor Fisher, the floor is yours.
Oh, my God. Thank you.
Just push that button there.
Push the gray button.
Speak.
How's that? Check one, two.
Perfect.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioners, thank you so much. It's an honor to be in the third largest city in Broward County.
Second.
Second.
I was told it was the third.
They lied.
They lied to me, huh? So seriously, thank you so much for giving me just a couple of minutes of your time for the audience to, again, I'm Lamar Fisher, mayor of Broward County, and I had the privilege to serve with most of you at municipal level. I was mayor of Pompano Beach, but one of my goals this year as mayor of Broward County is to visit each municipality just to continue to open up that communication to be able to collaborate together, and we are one community. That's my three Cs plan: communication, collaboration, and we are one community, whether 31 cities but one Broward, and regional, one regional at this particular time. So I'm here to serve you. I have been in your position, so I want to make sure that that disconnect doesn't happen anymore at the Broward County level, the city level. You have amazing attorneys, by the way, good dear friends. So I'm there to serve you, and I want to make sure that you understand that. And so anything you need, my office is open, and please reach out. I hope most of you have my cell phone. If not, I will get it to you, because anything as important as us working together, whether it be on the certex dollars, whether it be on any collaboration project, we want to maximize what we can do together, because we truly are a team standing for together, everyone achieves more. So thank you, Mayor, for all your service for all these years, and each member, one of you, what you do. Sometimes it's a very thankless job, and I understand it, but at the end of the day, you're serving these residents, and you're making Pembroke Pines a better place to live, work in place. I'm so proud of you, and so proud to be your mayor for Broward County.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Now, we're going to present our student ambassadors a certificate. I'd like to have every commissioner come down with me. This is, I think, should be done by the commission. I was supposed to meet with them this morning as they visited City Hall. A conflict arose, and I could not do it, and I apologize. So they're new to me as well. Good evening. They all look great. Okay. All right, these are student ambassadors chosen by their schools to be ambassadors. That's a heavy, heavy thing, and when you hear what they've done and what they do, it's terrific. And I know the mayor left, but if he knew what we do in Pembroke Pine... Mayor, this is what we do in Pembroke Pines. Okay, so our first ambassador is Michaela Morris, MacArthur High School. Are you here? I'm gonna read just, I'm gonna read just one. Michaela, congratulations. Michaela, as one of our admirable high school students who participated in the student ambassador program, which culminated in a tour of City Hall on January 18, 2023, to visit city departments and learn more about the city of Pembroke Pines. Student ambassadors are sincerely interested in government. On behalf of the city of Pembroke Pines and its residents, I, Mayor Frank C. Ordis, do hereby extend this expression of our appreciation for your great accomplishments. We take great pleasure in knowing your exceptional abilities and endeavors will be of great benefit to our communities and excellent government leadership. Congratulations. Hold on, I'll draw a picture. Just go right over there, and we'll draw a picture. All right, I'm not gonna read this one, but just the name. Is that all right? Gabriella Gores, West Broward, hi. I see Principal Fatone is here, principal. Congratulations. All right, from, oh, West Broward again. Anna Jorge. Anna? She must be in City Hall. Cheverisi Singh. Is that close? Pembroke Pines Charter High School, the academic village. Congratulations. Okay, from Somerset Academy, it's Daniela Valesquez. Daniela, congratulations. Felipe Anay, Somerset Arts Conservatory. Congratulations. Paige Preston, Somerset Arts Conservatory. Okay, congratulations. Harmon Bindra, Somerset Academy High School. Congratulations. Lara Lee Ramos, Franklin Academy. Congratulations. Danielle Romesh, Franklin Academy. Congratulations. Okay, Milagros Ortega, Pembroke Pines Charter High School Academic Group. Congratulations. Now, I notice a lot of principals here. Would you all stand and be recognized, please? We recognize Principal Fatone. I know we have some... Sure, I don't know. We have a photographer, we're gonna try him out. You can't stand in front of me. Oh, my God, they're all taller than I am. Okay, I think, you got everybody? You got me? Thank you. For all of us, we've got a great round of applause. Everybody stand back, please, for the great round of applause. All right, well, congratulations, anyway. Thank you all, thank you. Thank you. Now, we have a, another presentation. We'll present a proclamation to the West Broward High School Performance Ensemble for placing first in the 2022 FMBC Florida Marching Band Championships Class 4A State Championship. That's big. Congratulations. Someone here to accept it? Okay. You, you, you can't, you can't be shy if you have a marching band. Okay, West Broward High School Performance Ensemble. Whereas on November nineteen, twenty twenty-two, the West Broward High School Performance Ensemble took first place in the 2022 FMBC Florida Marching Band Championships. Class 4A State Championship held in Lauderdale, Florida, performing their show, Reflections of Alice. And whereas the performance ensemble was created when the school opened in twenty-two zero zero seven is under the direction of Dean L. Collmer. And whereas the performance ensemble has a team of fifteen instructors who work at all aspects and fundamentals of marching, music, the spinning rifles and flags, there's also a team of parents who create props, provide lunch, provide lunch. Chaperone raises funds that are attributed to its success. And whereas the student dedication and hard work includes summer practices of four weeks at eight-hour days. Practices during school year include Saturday, summer rehearsals, with class time to learn parts and drill moves. And whereas after preliminary competition on November nineteenth, the ensemble made top five of Class 4A, which allowed the ensemble to perform in finals that evening. Finals ended in early evening, and after much anticipation, first place was awarded to the great school of West Broward High School Performance Ensemble. And now, now, Frank Seorders, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, along with the city commissioners, are proud to recognize and congratulate the West Broward High School Performance Ensemble for placing first in the 2022 FMBC Florida Marching Band Competitions Class 4A State Championship. Congratulations. Anton Morales, class nine up. And Mr. Fatouz.
It's a fantastic job. These, these students worked so hard, and especially after coming out of the pandemic, and for them to push forward is just amazing, what a accomplishment. And I'm gonna present to you our class champion, champion medal. Thank you very much. Thank you for recognizing us.
Are we gonna hear something? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah, sure. Yeah, you can't stand in front of me. One, two, three. One, two, three. That's our third state championship. All right? Now, let's see if we can get the whole group in this picture, or pictures.
Why don't we stand behind you here?
I'm good. How are you? Nice to meet you.
Everybody give a thumbs up. We're winners.
Congratulations, everyone. City's proud of you.
Hey, my brother. Good to see you, man. Keep up the good stuff, man.
Okay, I have another presentation, and this is for Nina McPherson. Nina? Perry Airport? Nina's been at Perry as long as I've been mayor. All right, Nina, congratulations. The city of Pembroke Pines would like to recognize Nina McPherson, North Perry Airport Manager, for being named the 2022 Aviation Professional of the Year. Wow. Nina McPherson's thirty-year career. There you are, close. In aviation administration, management includes positions at Boca Raton Airport, Fort Lauderdale Hollywood International Airport, with the past twenty years as the airport manager at our great North Perry Airport, of which is one of the largest GA facilities in Florida. Under her leadership, the North Perry Airport has benefited from significant capital improvement efforts including major airfield and runway upgrades, safety and security enhancement, as well as hangar development and beautification projects. North Perry Airport has undergone significant improvements during Nina's tenure and has experienced a positive transformation throughout the past decade. Perhaps no other general aviation manager in Florida has as much involvement and success in nearly every aspect of daily airport operations as Nina. In addition to her management responsibilities, she has tirelessly given back to the aviation industry, serving on countless committees and aviation boards and monitoring, mentoring industry professionals. Nina is the past chair of the Florida Airports Council, the largest statewide aviation association in the country. While serving in this role, Nina was instrumental in the success of the 2019 Annual Conference Celebrated FAC's fifty-year anniversary. Nina is an accredited airport executive with the American Association of Airport Executives and newly appointed to the Board of Directors for the Southeast Chapter of the AAAE. Congratulations. And now she serves as the chair for the Southeast Continuing Florida Aviation Assistance Planning Process and as president of the FAC Education Foundation, conferring scholarships to deserving students, to deserving students, and as well-earned talent for generating consensus among diverse interests of FBOs, airport users, tenants, local municipalities, and neighboring communities. Nina, congratulations.
Well, I, I do believe you said it all. Okay. I do believe you said it all, and I'm slightly speechless. I'm incredibly honored that the city of Pembroke Pines bestowed upon me this recognition. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for the cooperation and collaboration through the last years. And to all the users at the airport, all the city commissioners, thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Now, we have, wait, wait, wait. We have what you've been waiting for. We have a big raffle. We're gonna, we're going to announce the winner. Florida prepaid scholarship raffle sponsored by the Pembroke Pines Charter High School Foundation. So let's draw that winner. Isn't that good?
Go, Dr. Sparrow, pick the good winner. Lucky winner.
All righty. Thank you. And the winner is Mayor Frank, no, no. Sorry, I read wrong. Eileen Loca, Valentina Silva, Beneficiary School, KLA, Beneficiary Grade Level Kindergarten. Are you here? Okay, that's a winner. Okay, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you all.
So Mayor, why don't we tell the audience what this lucky individual just received?
That's right. We're, that's what this city's all about, giving back.
A full ride prepaid Florida scholarship on behalf for a four-year university.
Great. Now, if, if you wanted to leave before we start our program... You can, or you can stay. How's Patty doing? I see nice photos. Nice photos. How are you doing, girl? Okay, thank you all, congratulations again.
Mayor.
Yes.
Before we start the meeting, could I have just a moment?
Of course.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank everybody for their letters, cards, phone calls, messages that we got. My husband Mark's father passed away, ninety-seven years old. Had a fabulous, fabulous life, full of life till the very, very end, was a fabulous father-in-law, I have to tell you that, and was really, a really kind of a cool guy. And, and he and his wife actually lived in Pembroke Pines for forty-some odd years, close to fifty years, and were business owners in the city of Pembroke Pines. So they had a real significant tie here to the, to the city, and they, and they loved it. So again, I would just like to say thank you to everybody that, you know, took the time to, to give their, their condolences to Mark. You know, he, he's doing well, he's doing well, and, and misses his dad, but he's doing well. So, and then the other thing, I've mentioned this to you all a couple of times, but it really actually happened. Our grandson Alex Rodriguez graduated from the Marine Corps training this past weekend. He is actually now a Marine, and we are so very happy and very proud of him. He's got, he, he passed the crucible and did all that horrible stuff that they do there, and he now is going to Virginia where his MOS, which is what he will be doing, is in Intel. He will be in Intel. So we are very happy and very excited, and obviously very, very proud of a nineteen-year-old young man who made the decision that serving his country was, was a good thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Prayers are with him.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I received a call today. Just wanted to let everyone know that former city commissioner Kitty Tebow passed away this week.
Our prayers are with her. Great woman. Okay, an announcement of items we pulled from the agenda?
No items, Mayor.
Items at the request of the public.
I have three requests from three individuals to speak.
All right.
The first one is George Corin.
Glad to see you're feeling better. All right, sir, you know we have three minutes. Need your name and address for the record.
George Corin, six, seven, five, one, Southwest Eleventh Street, Pembroke Pines, also known as Pines Village. Here tonight to talk about the code situation in our area. Over the holidays, from Thanksgiving through New Years, our section of the city looked really bad. People are putting out bulk trash way too early. People don't retrieve their trash cans after they've been emptied, and they feel like it's okay to put them out on Tuesday morning when they go to work. And they just fill our swales with cars, and there's plenty of commercial vehicles just parking at their homes regularly, which is not allowed. I have a question. Does Pines Village have a full-time code officer? And if so, do they do a regular patrol?
That's one of them. Mr. Dodge?
I would have, is Mr. Diaco here or Chief? Could you respond, please?
I've got an answer for you, George.
Okay. Also, does code have a daily record of the citations or warnings issued? And if so, how can the public access it? I feel that the code section of the ordinances must be rewritten, because code is presently writing them under an obscure general maintenance type of issue. Like, we have a very specific time for the regular cans and everything. We need to, code, a bulk needs to be treated the same way. Can only be put out at such and such a time before the pickup day.
Okay, let's find out from the chief. Chief?
And the main problems that we have are that the early placement of the bulk trash and the following people, they don't clean up the little pieces after, you know, so it just blows around. Okay. I mentioned the early placement of the cans and then bringing them in. And our beautiful swales and stuff are being ruined by the parking. I would like to see the city ban all parking on residential green space, meaning lawns and swales, and crack down on the commercial vehicles.
Thank you, George.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Chief? You have three questions.
Kipper Chambino, Police Chief. Number one, yes, there is a permanent code officer for your area. I'll find out...
I'll find out which one it is. Um, it does rotate on the weekends a little bit for weekend coverage, but I will find out who that is for you. Uh, number two was, do we have records of citations and other actions that are made available to the public? Um, I don't believe we do, but we can certainly look into producing that for you. And what was the third question?
George, what was the third question?
Oh, increasing enforcement of parking on swales?
Oh, right.
Um, we will definitely make that a priority in Pines Village.
Okay, Chief, thank you. George, you do a great job doing that out there in your ci, in your part of the city. I know you do, I see you walking around. Great job.
Mayor?
Yes?
Um, could I ask, uh, the, uh, City Manager a question about this issue?
City Manager?
Okay, Mr. Dodge, um, Mr. Corin brought up a couple of issues, and I think one of the issues does, uh, some of the issues do fall, uh, specifically under code, which is the cars parking on the swales, that kind of stuff. But there was something else that he brought up, which was, um, garbage, not only just garbage, but bulk pickup. It was my understanding that, um, during some of the last contract stuff that we, that we put together, that there actually was a, I think we hired two, two folks, um, that were to go out and patrol the communities and, um, for lack of a better way to describe it, if, if a resident was not following what they should do as far as putting out their, their bulk or their garbage, if they were putting out too much, uh, too much bulk, the ten, you know, the ten, uh, ten square, whatever it was supposed to be, or if it was on the wrong day way too soon, that initially, it was my understanding that that, that those employees were to either hang, hang a note for the, for the resident to know or to knock on the door and explain. It was kind of a teaching thing for our residents, um, to understand how this new way would be handled. Um, and then if, in fact, the resident didn't come into compliance or continued to do the same thing, that's for that part of it, then when citations would actually be written with fines and all that. So, am, am I, Mr. Dodge, am I understanding that correctly, uh, that there actually are two parts of what Mr. Corin is asking about?
Mr. Dodge?
Yes, Mayor, yes, that is accurate and that is done, and we do have records of, of the notification processes. And if it's, uh, multiple times, there are fines that are accrued. Those records are available. If there's a particular area or neighborhood you would like information on, I, I certainly can provide that to Mr. Corin.
So, we do have the employees that are going out at any time on the routes to know that?
Yes, we do.
And remember, remember, there's one day out of the year that bulk is not picked up, and it's Christmas. Now, if you have a five-week schedule, you have to see what those weeks are in a year. You gotta fall, you have to fall into the four week. If you're into the fifth, you're not gonna get picked up. I guess everybody understands that.
Yeah, Mayor, you're absolutely correct. We always, uh, all of us get calls.
Vice Mayor, do you want to say something?
Sure, I'd love to, Mayor. Um, we always get the calls, and then Chief knows. Um, there's five weeks in the last month of every quarter. And that's, it's always the last month of a quarter that, um, that we have the issue. People put it out because they think it's, you know, every other Tuesday or every Thursday, whenever that, whenever that might be. Um, certainly, um, certainly, uh, for any resident who wants to look up a, a code citation, you can go to Pines.com and it's available through, through the search link. Just put in the address and you'll see if there's anything currently active. Uh, the city spends a lot of money, uh, with IT to update all this stuff, so you can have a full history of property. Um, lastly, um, just, um, I think the Chief sent me an email, I don't know, a day or two ago. Um, and, um, I can't speak for Pines Village specifically, but I asked, uh, a general question. There's roughly about twelve hundred open, uh, code citations, uh, within the general area. Uh, Pines Village, of course, doesn't have twelve hundred of them, but there is always an active case search. Um, and you're always welcome to come to a magistrate hearing that's held once a month.
Right. All right, the, um, Mr. Secretary, the next one?
Thank you, Mayor. Brian Andino.
Brian? Mind on. You have three minutes. Need your name and address, please. Hit that speak button for any gray one.
There we go. Brian Andino, one, nine, two, five, one, Northwest Twelfth Manor, uh, the Chapel Trail community. Um, so, first off, um, you know, I'd like to, uh, thank the board for, uh, having us here tonight and the presentations. Uh, but, as you know, Commissioner Castillo had appointed myself and Ms. Palacio in August twenty-two, excuse me, August twenty-twenty-two for the Charter Review, uh, Committee. It's my understanding that that committee is not yet completed. So, I'm here today, um, to ask where the rest of the board stands on getting this committee completed so that we can continue, or, excuse me, so that we can begin our work on reviewing the charter and proposing the amendments, uh, for next year's ballot. It's my understanding that we have up until December of this year to get those, to get those amendment, the proposed amendments submitted for the ballot next year.
Let's find out. Mr. Dodge?
Mr. Mayor, I believe the City Clerk has advertised that, uh, those openings many times. Uh, I'm not, oh, I believe there are a couple other appointments since the time, sir, that you were appointed, but I don't know what the status is. Can you tell us, Marley?
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. There is going to be an appointment this, this evening to the board. One of the board appointments will be to the Charter Review Board. Outside of that, we have appointments that were already made for District Four and District Three. We're still pending additional appointments.
Okay. Nick?
So, my main concern is, um, we, one, we have a, a time, uh, a time limit to get this done. We don't want the public to get cheated, um, by us not having enough time to get this work done. So, I would just ask the board, um, you know, if there is any additional, uh, help that is needed in trying to get these positions filled or extra advertising, um, I'd be more than happy to help with the advertising and trying to get the board, uh, excuse me, the com, the committee fully staffed so that we can get this done.
Okay, done. Thank you, sir.
Uh, two, uh, piggyback off, uh, the first gentleman. Um, I was wondering if there is an association, uh, that, a homeowners' association that is levying fines to residents of its community, uh, what is being done by the city to oversee that HOA for the, for code compliance? None?
No, because that's a HOA. You're elected, I'm a private organization.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, next one, City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Neil Charlie?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, just announce your name and address for the record, please.
Neil Charlie. Nine, forty, Northwest, one, ninety-seventh Avenue, Pembroke Pines Chapel Trail Preserve Estates.
Okay, you've got three minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners and City Managers. I am Neil. I'm the president of West Pines United, which is your premier soccer league in Chapel Trail Parks, right behind Chapel Trail School. I'm here on behalf of West Pines United Football Club where we are, we, we had a record request for public knowledge of our youth soccer players. And we, I'm here to discuss a renegotiation of our field use agreement or an amendment of our field use agreement where this youth player has become public records to the outside. I'm sure you guys can understand that we don't want this information out for this could damage our club very, very, very badly. The information was requested from us, and we provided it so far, but we're asking that the city does not give this out to a third party for the reason, as you know, it's a privacy data. What can happen is that somebody whoever lives in the West, Pembroke Pines can take this information, sell it to a separate club, and take our players. As of right now, we have five teams in the top twenty of the state, and two, that's state and regional champions, and one that is state champion. So, a neighboring soccer club, we won't name the names of our neighboring soccer clubs, can take this information and poach our players. This is a harsh thing. So, we'd like, I'd like to reach out to each of you if you guys don't mind. Our attorneys are involved in this. We'd like to reach out to each of you and maybe talk about a renegotiation of that amendment that's in our.
Mr. Dodge, you want to comment?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd ask Christina come down because she's been involved in this.
Good evening, Mayor, Christina Sorenson, Assistant City Manager. So, uh, the request that he's asking for is, um, we did get a public records request, and in the public records request, they asked for a list of the rosters to include names, email addresses, phone numbers. And the club did not want to provide the information, claiming that it is privileged information on their part and they don't want to share for what he just explained to you. Um, I've spoken with City Attorney, and all I understand his concern, the agreement requires him to provide us with the rosters, therefore, it's public record, and I really don't have a choice, but I have to provide it.
City Attorney, you confer?
Mayor, if you will. Mr. Horowitz has a quick comment for the record, if you'll permit him that opportunity. Thank you, Mayor. We have looked at the issue, and to the extent we can limitedly discuss it in public, we're happy to try.
Good, very good. Thank you so much.
Given the nature of the request and given the nature of the statute. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Jacob Horowitz, Assistant City Attorney. And we have received this inquiry, we've looked at this inquiry a little bit. Uh, there is an exemption in Chapter one nineteen that speaks to government-sponsored recreation programs. A government-sponsored recreation program is a program in which an agency takes responsibility for the participants in that program. That exemption doesn't apply to the West Pembroke Pines United's program because the City of Pembroke Pines has no responsibility for the participants in their programs. If the city were running its own youth sports programs, where we were dealing with the registration, we were taking responsibility for all of the participants, there would be an exemption that would apply to our, to the city's program. But that program does not extend to West Pines because they're not considered a, an agency for purposes of Chapter one nineteen. As Ms. Sorenson said, there is no exemption that applies specifically to the information the gentleman is referring to.
Mr. Castillo?
And yet, they're playing on city fields. That we, by agreement and by vote here, uh, lease to them. So, I think that there should be legislative leeway for us to determine whether the, uh, exemption applies. And I think the exemption should apply, no different, no different for their league than anybody else's. Just, just because we have a contract, um, and, and they're, they're a third party and we're not running the, the program directly, doesn't mean that, that the, um, the impact that could be damaging to young people, uh, has to happen. So, if they have to provide the information to Christina, I think that that information should, uh, remain confidential because they're using city fields, which we own, and because the, uh, the, uh, uh, the special programs that they run for soccer are an extension of, uh, of the city's program. Otherwise, they wouldn't need to come to us, they'd play on their own fields. So, I, I, I think we really should take another look at this a little bit, a little bit more in the dr. I, I don't think there's one Commissioner here who would, who, or, or the mayor. I don't want to speak to them, but I don't believe that any of us would want to see, um, the problem that Mr. Charlie referred to, uh, come to pass.
Yeah, I actually object to that, the last statement. I'd like to be able to weigh in, Mayor, if possible.
Vice Mayor?
That's okay, the, the Commissioner invoked all of us, and I'm just, I'm stating an objection.
Vice Mayor, do you want to speak?
I would like to.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, if I could have, um, I'm sorry, so your name. Can you please come forward? I, I just want to clarify something you said on record.
Sure.
Okay. Did I, it is, your concern is about poaching, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, the poaching would, would have a, a significant financial impact to the organization?
Yes, sir. It did four years ago with the same problem.
With the same issue, okay. So, four years ago, did we have, was there a public record request and that's how they obtained the information?
No, our own internal person gave that information out.
Okay.
Why we're trying to allow that out.
So, so, it's different from youth protection. This is a financial protection of an organization that happens to involve youth, but it's not youth protection as in we are, as the City Attorney alluded to. Uh, we have, we have travel teams all over the city that run our fields.
I think we're the only travel teams, sir.
In other sports, in other sports that, that, that have a, you have an, you have an exclusivity when it comes to field use, but we have, uh, we have different sports, softball, baseball, that use our fields in, in a, uh, in a similar fashion, but we are definitely not. Um, the City Pembroke Pines Football Club, there is, there's a distinct difference that one nineteen is being applied to. Now, how the city's agreement is stated, there is no, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Christina. This is the only one agreement that does not require fifty percent resident participation. Am I correct?
Their agreement requires fifty-one percent.
Fifty-one percent?
Yes.
And it's verified, uh, Ms. Sorenson, by staff based upon, uh, water bill or some other?
The agreement requires them to verify with water bill, mortgage bill, something, some sort of identification.
It requires the organization to verify, or the, or the staff?
Yes, sir.
Have a check and balance to ensure that the information being provided to the city is accurate?
We confirm everything.
Okay, and that's confirmed, uh, Ms. Sorenson, uh, via electronic transmission versus coming into the office and showing people, and, and showing your staff, uh, the, the roster?
Every club does some, does it differently.
Specifically this organization?
I don't recall, I'd have to ask my staff.
So, so, to the City Attorney, uh, Mr. Horowitz.
Can I?
No, sir. Would, would a, would a public record be created if an organization were to present staff, a list of, um, fifty-one percent residency requirement? Is there anything that, that, that burdens the city to, um, hold on to that information for verification from one season to a next, to the next? And is there a, is there a, a potential, um, uh, area of, of opportunity to not create a public record based upon resident verification of a water bill? Versus the organization actually having a spreadsheet going, this is all their stuff?
Got it.
Without getting into all the details of what that information may actually contain, once the city receives a record from the club, the city has an obligation to retain that record as a public record in accordance with the retention schedule that the state puts out. The timeframe of retention is dictated by the state. What information we request of the club is up to the agreement between the city and the club, which is embraced in our current facility use agreement.
Okay, so, is it, is it a, if I could ask the, um, you, sir? The information that, that the city is requesting of you is player's name, which certainly is a minor.
That's fine, that's fine.
Right, it's a minor, which I, I do say we have to protect kids with, with respect to, to the names. But with, with respect to the compliance with the agreement, aren't we basically just looking at household? Does a name have to be included, uh, Ms. Sorenson, um, as, as far as a player? Can, can a, can a youth player, and this is for the City Attorney, maybe the way. Can a youth player be, um, uh, be an alias? Instead of having, instead of having, uh, an eight-year-old child's name out in the public record? Because I, I, I take, you know, some concerns about that.
Um, I understand your concern, but the rosters that we require include all of the information. And the reason we ask for it is in the event West Pines United comes to me tomorrow and says, "We're done, we don't want to do this anymore," and they pack up their bags and leave, me as an official, I want to try and remain continuity for these kids and this player. So, I have to have the ability to reach out to these kids, to these families, to say, "Okay, let's figure out how we're gonna do that."
Let her answer, please.
And it goes, and we do that for every single one of our clubs. We need to be able to know who's playing in our fields and who these children are.
Right, but.
This is, let me just say, this doesn't look like it's gonna get settled tonight.
Right.
We're gonna have a back-and-forth of discussion. We have a potential problem, we need to take care of it.
If I may?
Go ahead, Ms. Sorenson.
What I think Commissioner Castillo was referring to is having the city assert the exemption in Chapter one nineteen in order to reply to government-sponsored rec programs.
So, we gotta do it.
And again, from the City Attorney's Office's perspective, we obviously have an interest of protecting the city as it relates to liability or liabilities that could incur. Just want to be clear for the record, if the city asserts this exemption on behalf of the club, we are accepting responsibility for all of the participants. of the club, we are accepting responsibility for all of the participants in, in, in those programs.
So, if I may, Mayor, so the city attorney, in the best interest of the city, is this the best interest of the city to have a provision like that for us to assume responsibility? And, and, and let me, let me specifically to the public record portion, I, if, if, if a private business goes belly up, it is not the government who has to come in to save the day. I'm sorry, that's not the way it works. And if it were to be proposed, then the five of us can decide that. Okay? But if we have a youth soccer program run by the City of Pembroke Pines, and we lose staff, certainly that's a continuity issue that we have to backfill.
Okay, Mr. Horowitz, we have an answer?
But we can't, we can't be, we can't be the savior of all private organizations because there's a lot of money being made.
Got the point. We have an answer?
Again, um, I, I believe that we have an answer, just want to be clear that the commission is essentially directing us to assert this exemption, which we will do.
Yeah.
But by asserting that exemption, just be mindful that we're accepting the liability and responsibility for all of these participants. I'm certainly miss- I'm certainly.
That's pretty, that's pretty big.
And again, I, and.
What do you mean by liability?
Yeah, explain that a little more.
Let me just, let me just sort of read the definition of the statute, if I may. This is a government-sponsored recreation program, is a program for which an agency, City of Pembroke Pines, assumes responsibility for a child participating in that program.
Right.
If the City of Pembroke Pines is prepared to assume responsibility for the participants in the West United program, we have no problem asserting, asserting that exemption.
We're doing it through him.
We just want to be clear on what asserting that exemption does in the context of taking on that responsibility for the city.
Mayor?
Mayor, I haven't spoken yet.
Let me, let me, let me just say, let me just say this. This seems to be a bigger issue that needs to be addressed at this commission.
Needs a.
I would suggest we have a workshop and lay it all out with timers of essence and go from there. Mr. Uh, Mr. Manager, you agree?
Mayor, we can, uh, set up any workshop, that's what the commission would like to.
Everybody okay with that? I don't want to give an opinion tonight, I just want that.
I prefer to see staff meet with, uh, with the lawyers and, uh, and see if they can fix it. They may not need it.
Yeah, we, we don't need a workshop, we need, we need administration and.
If you need a workshop, I'm.
All right, so you got the, you got the answer? We're going to work, Mr. Dodge is going to try to put something together, if staff has to do it, we'll do it.
The, the last question I have, Mayor.
All right.
Last question I have, the ci- last question I have for the city attorney. A request came in, irrespective if we choose at some future date to make an exception, we, this isn't pronoun tump, we can't go back and say you can't have it. The request is already put in, we are obligated to give that information.
Vice Mayor, we're going to do this in a workshop where you're going to hear all of it. You can't just send out a.
So, I did provide the information, but when I provided it, I just.
I'm asking the city attorney, sir.
I'm sorry, my apologies.
All right, let, let, let's do this. Just answer that, and we're going to move on with a format that we have to do this right.
What, what I'm being told by professional staff is the information has already been provided.
Okay, good. All right? Thank you all, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, everyone.
All right, thank you.
The city clerk?
Mayor, no other requests.
Okay. Commission audit report?
No report, ma'am.
Appeals or board of adjustment decisions?
No appeals.
Announced with a board and committee appointments? Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you very much. Uh, today we have with us, uh, Steven Reinstein, his wife Rebecca is also here, and I'm appointing him to the Economic Development Board for, uh, for District Four. Mr. Reinstein lives in Century Village, he's a very active member there in, in civic engagement. He has a master's degree in music education from Manhattan School of Music, but so varied is his background that he also works for H&R Block. And, uh, he, uh, where he, I'm sure makes music there as well. And, uh, I think that, uh, his, his interests, uh, gravitate toward what's best for the City of Pembroke Pines, he has a business mind as well, and I'm happy to have him come to the podium and say hello.
Mr. Reinstein, please come up. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much, and I'd personally like to thank Angelo for giving me the honor of working with all of you and helping the City of Pembroke Pines. Um, my original background, as he mentioned, is in, uh, music and education and the arts, and, uh, I'm currently working part-time at H&R Block, but that's because it's a taxi. But I look forward to, uh, working with you guys and helping the city out as much as I can. And Angelo, thank you again.
Thank you, congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard. All right, Commissioner Good.
Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say that it is my privilege to appoint, uh, Mr. Robert Goggins.
Who's that?
A.K.A. Robbie, to the, um, to the Charter Review Board. I, um, I do, I do want to say that, um, you know, Mr. Goggins, if I'm not mistaken, has probably lived in Pembroke Pines all his life.
Yep.
And, um, has a great history, uh, here in the city, even when the city was young. Um, Mr. Goggins has also been a business operator within, uh, the City of Pembroke Pines, and, uh, has, uh, gotten to know a lot of folks, uh, just through that type of operation, because back then, you know, he, uh, he was running a hardware store, and that was before the big Home Depots and the Lowes were even, even on the map. And so, uh, Mr. Goggins was, you know, asked for, uh, advice, probably on many occasions well before, uh, he even became a public official, because, uh, Mr. Goggins is also a, uh, board member for the South Broward Drainage District, and I could tell you from my own personal experience and watching him operate within that venue of government operations, he does a tremendous job in, in his understanding of government and processes and protocols and Robert Rules of Orders and all those kind of things. I can't, can't think of anybody better who would lend, uh, a good support to, uh, this Charter Review Board. So, I am really very, very happy, uh, that, uh, Mr. Goggins accepted, um, the invite, and, uh, I know that we will, uh, benefit immensely from his great experience. And so, Mr. Goggins, thank you very much for, uh, serving, not just on the South Broward Drainage, but serving the City of Pembroke Pines in the many ways that you have, sir. Thank you. If you want to say something, please, Mr. Mayor, if you can.
Yeah, sure, I used to shop for this place.
[laughing].
He still owe me, he still owe me money.
Ace Hardware.
Congratulations.
Evening. Robert E. Goggins IV, 7760 Northwest Sixth Court, formerly at 2020 Northwest 82nd Avenue, Pasadena Lakes, where the house was first started out in the very end of the 60s. Ace Hardware City, or better well-known as Hardware City Incorporated, 38-year retail hardware store in the east end of the city. I don't know if that breaks records for a small.
Has to be.
Independent business, but, uh, uh, one, one of the things we did was we got a key to the city. But I'm not sure, because when we got a key to the city, we couldn't stick it in the key machine, cut it in the front door.
It was a bad one?
Well, we came out, tried the bank vault to see if yours any money, there was nothing in there. But it's a pleasure, I appreciate it, I'm just here to help. Uh, I'm also on the Board of Adjustment for the city, as everybody well knows.
Thank you all for your great work, appreciate it, brother.
Just here to do what I can, take care of business. Thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
We're on consent agenda. Items 1 through 17, what is your pleasure?
I'd like to pull item 1, please.
Item 1, Commissioner Castillo. Any other?
Three, please.
Three, Commissioner Seifel. Any others? Are you hearing them? Com- uh, city clerk, call the rule, please, for items, uh, 2 through 17.
Mayor, did you make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, he's a motion, Mr. Mayor.
So, I'm moved, uh, moved by Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor.
Second by Commissioner Seifel. Go ahead.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item 1, Commissioner Castillo.
Some motion to approve the Minnesota Multi-State Contracting Alliance for Pharmacy, MMCP Agreement between the City of Pembroke Pines and the State of Minnesota, and the Overdose Dediction, uh, Detection Mapping Application Program, ODMAP, Agreement between the City of Pembroke Pines and the Washington-Baltimore High Density Tra- uh, Trafficking Area, HIDA, to allow for the Police Department to obtain, um, naloxone through, uh, Florida Health, Helping Emergency Responders Obtain Support Heroes Program.
There's a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Second?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Seifel, second. Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
I don't often do this, but I'm actually very excited that the City of Pembroke Pines is joining the many police forces, not only here in the state of Florida, but also, uh, around the United States in, uh, in bringing forward Narcan to, into the hands of our, our police officers, uh, the fire department already has it. Uh, however, having, having this in the hands of the police department is incredibly important in the age of fentanyl, in the age of, uh, ever, ever-changing strands of, of opiates that, uh, are coming in, not only natural opiates, but synthetic. And, um, this has the immediate effect of neutralizing anyone under those circumstances, whether they ingest it physically or whether it's a transdermal, uh, uh, contact with, with this, uh, with these opiates, uh, Narcan is the thing to do. And the great thing about Narcan is, if you happen to be wrong and you administer it to somebody, it doesn't do anything to them. It's, uh, it's, uh, essentially, uh, not, um, a problem for them to, to ingest the Narcan. And so, I, uh, I'm very, very happy. I know that, uh, the police officers will be eager to have it and to use it, hopefully never, but when they need to. And, uh, it makes the police force of the City of Pembroke Pines stronger, better, more compassionate, and more able to serve, uh, the public. And I want to thank the chief and his command staff and everyone who's associated with, uh, with this item. Kudos to you.
Thank you, Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am. Go.
Do you want to say something?
I did.
Go ahead, Commissioner Seifel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Chief, this is, Chief, this is truly a, a, a good program in, in, in the fact that in these types of situations, as we all know, time really is of the essence on having a, a potential for a successful outcome. And I think that while our police, while our fire department has this and they are, they are there, sometimes police get there even sooner. It doesn't really matter who gets there, it's whoever gets there first and has the ability to administer this to, um, possibly and hopefully to, to save a life. And that's really the important part about it. So, I think, um, I'm, I'm sorry, actually, that it took such a long time for it to become from not just fire department, but police as well as a first responder umbrella, if you will, of, of the men and women that go out there and are first on the scene. So, um, I think this is, is, uh, is wonderful, I, and I'm, and I'm glad that we are participating in it, and, uh, that we will have, um, unfortunately, probably a lot of times to have to use it, but I'm glad that it will be there. So, so thank you to our, our fire, and also thank you to our police for, for getting so involved in this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, uh, call the rule, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Seifel, item 3.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Motion to award FB number PSUT-22-03 Removal Disposal of Grit and Screenings to the most responsive responsible bidder, Panzerella Waste and Recycling Services, for an initial four-year period, initial four-year period in the amount, in the annual amount not to exceed $164,000,043, subject to annual mutually agreed-upon rate adjustments based on CPI.
There's a second? Second, second by Commissioner Castillo. All right, Commissioner Seifel?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a, um, a couple of questions, um, on this. I, I know that what was put into our, uh, backup here was, um, that there was, there was some difference in the number of pickups from 12 and 24, which caused then some different differential in some of the, um, the cost, I guess, involved i- in this. My, my real question is, um, this, this is looking for a new, for a new contract, but who currently is providing this service to us, and how is that being provided to us?
Uh, Mike Bailey, Utilities Director, the company Waste Pro is currently providing the service under their, an extension to their current contract.
And is that, and, and they've been doing it for some time, or how long has that been?
Uh, I think it's been at least four years.
At least four years? Okay. And, and so if it's under their current contract, is that contract expiring? Is that why we're looking for this, or what?
Yes, that contract has expired. Waste Pro agreed to extend it to the day after, or tomorrow, to allow us to continue service until a contract was awarded, a new contract.
Okay, so, okay, uh, okay. But I guess, when I, when I went through and I looked at all the, the exhibits and was trying to figure it out, other than the, I guess, the, the issue which was the number of times, the 12 as opposed to the 24.
Correct.
I'm not sure why I understand why, why we are, why we're not staying with, who's been doing it with us if the cost is, is the same. Am I not, am I not reading that correctly?
Um, I, it's, the contract expired.
Okay.
We had, uh, taken care of, or used up all the provisions for renewals.
We have used them all up.
Correct. So, that, that contract is completely expired.
So, is that, is that this particular part of the contract not part of our bigger Waste Pro contract? Is that not dealt with in our current Waste Pro contract?
No, it is not.
It is not?
It's a separate service.
It is a separate service?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, um, and then, so the, the difference in the service and, or the cost, the cost to us, what does it actually cost us to do this? Mr. Dodge? Or whoever?
The, uh, the item, uh, the dollar amount was in the agenda item, I believe, the amount that was allocated for was 160, let me get it. Uh, 100 and, uh, can't exceed $164,043.
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
It cannot exceed $164,043. It could be less. It depends upon the amount and the volume that, uh, is collected.
So, okay, so if, if, okay, what I'm looking at is 175 tons, what happens if it's more than that? Does it ever go, do we ever go more than, than that?
So, that's a conservative estimate. The actual amount of grit and screenings produced is dependent on the flow to the wastewater plant. So, that's a conservative estimate. If, for example, we had significantly more flow than we have in the past, which is unlikely, but if we did, then there would be more grit and screenings to be collected, and then we would most likely have to come in to you for, for approval to, of a change order.
To, for a change order, going through that.
But it's, it is still based upon a unit charge, so when you're comparing apples to apples between both vendors, it's, it's the unit charge, so.
So, it's still the, still, still would be the same on that?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Good, Commissioner Good?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, all right, just one moment here. So, I, um, I, I just had a, a question in regards to, um, you know, how, how we, how we got to being able to use a, a different vendor for solid waste disposal. a different vendor for solid waste disposal. So, you know, for me, I just went to, you know, the code ordinances and I read the exclusivity of our current hauler for solid waste disposal and it includes industrial activities. So how is it that we are even able to take this to a bid process when in our own code it speaks to exclusivity of our hauler when we give them a contract? So I'm just trying to make that connection because there's only two exemptions that I can see in the code for solid waste disposal or collection disposal, and that's, one is the condos and that's in section, and by the way, I'm making specific reference to 94.10, which is called Agreement with Private Collectors, but that does speak, has several references to exclusivity of the contractor. So there is an exemption for condos. You know, there is a non-exclusive right for condos to collect their bulk containers. But, and the other exemption is in a different section of the code, which is recovered materials. So recovered materials is another exemption to our solid waste collection ordinance. So how is this one exempt from our solid waste collection ordinance? If somebody can explain that to me, I appreciate that.
Jim?
Unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that. I think it's a good question. I'd.
Anybody have an answer?
I think the city attorney could address that for you.
I can, I can try. I can, the exemptions, Madam Mayor, that are referred to by Commissioner Good are accurate. Those are the two general exemptions, to the extent that this is a carve-out from an existing relationship. I cannot answer the question as to the direction being taken to do this separately, but it may well be considered to be a separate service. And that's the only way I can answer the question without looking into the details further as to the reasoning behind the assignment. It could be, in fact, looked at as a segmented service from the original bid and different than the exclusive provision for hauling or collection of waste, solid waste.
Mr. Rivera, did you want to comment then?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Rivera, will you finish?
Well, I would, I was actually going to, I'll wait until.
Mr. Rivera, did you want to comment? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, Attorney, Ken Rivera, Waste Pro, 179302 Pines Boulevard. I forgot where my office is. But I just wanted to take in the opportunity to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I hope everybody was safe and happy about it. But wanted to also take the opportunity to kind of address the body regarding this item. I don't know the particulars, oops, don't know the particulars of how.
You've been like.
On how we got here, but we're here. So we wanted to, we completely understand the IFB process and we ultimately respect the final decision that comes from this body. However, I'd be remiss if I didn't attempt to make an offer to the city regarding this particular item. And our recommendation is to really look at how it's done today versus how the IFB was put together. A lot of these numbers, although they are, you know, the process, you have to plug in numbers because that's what was required to do. You know, your current cost right now, and I know it because I'm the one that's doing it, is, you know, less than what you're proposing to recommend to award. In that case, that number is 164,043, which was the amount that staff recommended to award to the very qualified hauler, by the way. However, your cost down was 149. Our final offer would be we can provide the service. There's no transition, there's no safety issues, there's no service concerns, and we can come in and authorize us to do the work for, you know, 142 a year based on the numbers that are you seeing on there. And that's where we're at. I mean, that's, you know, it wouldn't be fair to us to not try to come in front of the body and propose.
City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor. Again, you've heard testimony from the current hauler, and this particular product, which is a byproduct of the wastewater plant, has been looked at by staff as being a segmented or a separate service. You're now hearing from Waste Pro itself that's been providing the service already. The item has been put on the street for the purposes of a bid. I don't know that Waste Pro actually provided a bid. You did. The end result of which is that the commission, not unlike any other service, that it would otherwise consider engaging a vendor in, you know, has certain rights and opportunities under the procurement code to make certain decisions.
Mayor? Commissioner Casillo?
I'm going to answer.
Mr. Mayor, if I, go ahead.
Commissioner Casillo?
Just had a question. This service of picking up the screen, the grit and the screenings, is it paid for by the water fee or is it paid for under the trash fee?
Sorry, it's paid for under the utility bill.
Yeah, I know that. But is it paid for by water or is it paid for under the trash fee?
It's technically under the sewer rates.
Under the sewer rates?
Correct.
So the residential and, the residential and commercial construct that we created for garbage has nothing to do with this service?
Currently not.
So this is a totally different service.
Point of order, point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Good, point of order?
Yeah, or as a point of clarification, but I would just like to refer back again to the ordinance that does make this subject to our ordinance.
Okay. Well. Commissioner Casillo?
Yes. Mr. Goran?
Yes, Count.
Can you pull up the section, please? Because if that's the case, we should never have authorized this RFP. Our hands were tied. So I just want to, I just want to understand what it is that the law says.
May I read, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
Section 9410, which is cited to by Commissioner Good, references garbage, rubbish, litter, and weeds. That's the topic of the initial ordinance.
If I may support this, if you can just read probably 94.10 sub 4.
Okay, subsection 4 says, if I may, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, there's an exclusive right and obligation to provide solid waste collection and disposal services within the city boundaries, present and future, for all residential curbside and all apartment, condominium, business, industrial, and commercial establishments that are certified for occupancy after February 1, 1992, and governmental establishments to the extent permitted by law, provided, however, that a certificate of occupancy issued as a result of remodeling with no change in ownership of the property shall not require the customer to change to collector except for construction slash remodeling, demolition, and debris created thereby. That's the section.
So would you agree, Miss City Attorney, that this has nothing to do with rubbish? This is a, this is a byproduct of the water treatment process or the sewage treatment process?
There appears to be a distinction.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Again, a point of clarification. Again, the definition of solid waste is very broad and may very well include the definition of the grit that you speak to.
Well, I think we get to decide that.
You know, I believe that is in state statutes. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, I look to help, I look to help you for a moment.
Everybody's talking. Hold on a second. City Attorney, what we've heard, what kind of a decision can we make?
State law does define solid waste. I don't have that definition in front of me, but there is a reference to it under the state statutes.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like to, because it is rather complicated and I think some very good questions are asked, and I think it's unfair for us to put the attorney on the spot without giving him an opportunity to do the review. So I would actually like, because we heard that there is still service availability, to table this item to the next meeting, allow the attorneys the opportunity to review this particular concern in detail so they can provide us with the answers, because I'm not comfortable myself believing.
I don't disagree.
I think we should table this to the next.
Folks, can we come to order? Is there a second to the moment?
I will second that, but I had one last.
Commissioner Casillo seconds the motion to table.
Yes.
And discussion on, and discussion on a motion to table.
Yes.
Commissioner Casillo?
I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit worried that, wow, I don't know if worried's the right word. I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit off-put that we've come this far only to discover that potentially we can't do this. So I think that somewhere along the line, a wire got crossed, and my questions were, in my opinion, very, very pertinent. This has nothing to do with refuse. This has to do with, this has to do with sludge or other matter that comes from a totally different process that's not paid out of the trash service. So, Mr. Three, I'm going to need you to take a look at where it is and memo us in advance of this, whenever it is that we're going to, we're going to, I need to know whether or not the commissioner's point, which was eloquently stated, is correct or we never had the authority to do this, even though we approved it. And so that's what I need to know.
Further discussion on a motion to table.
I do have a question, Mayor.
Motion to table? We're on the discussion, motion to table.
Just to clarify.
Clarify.
Whether or not, I'm asking the, if I can discuss whether or not to table it or if I can ask the city attorney.
We're on the motion to table.
A question about the main.
We're on the motion to table.
Because I didn't have a chance to weigh in, so.
City Attorney?
I'd only be handcuffed.
Are we on a motion to table?
You're on the motion to table, but the Vice Mayor did not have an opportunity to question, which was an issue that should be addressed.
Would you want to question the motion to table?
No. I wanted to question the item before we got to the, whether or not we're going to.
Raise your hand or?
I tried to, but that was.
Vice Mayor, go ahead. We'll give you.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
You had offered, you had offered a response to one of the questions on what the city commission can and can't do, but it was a little bit unclear to me. And for me, it's processed. This item, if we can, if the city clerk can actually pull the actual backup that everyone's seeing in their book, this went out in October, I believe. It was on an agenda. We approved it to go out. There was no, it hadn't been on consensus to do that. From that point, from the bid opening to now, I haven't had any discussion with current vendor. I inquired last night about cost. I don't know, City Attorney, if we're even allowed to entertain a different offer from a sealed bid. I don't recall any sealed bids when it comes to straight price that we can even negotiate that or reject that. Am I, is this any, is this, is the offer being made? Is this, is this, is this a, is this a normal process? Because it doesn't seem like when we go out for price, that's even negotiable. That's why it's based on price. And I see our procurement director nodding his head, so I'm glad we're, I'm glad I'm in the ballpark here. Now, Commissioner Good is rightfully so, alluding to a provision in our ordinance that allows us to do certain things. Now, would that be to negotiate with any of our current haulers to drive this stuff up to Okeechobee? If that were the case, then why did we even go out?
Right.
Why didn't we just give administration authorization to negotiate and then have staff confirm whether or not the price that was given meets market standards? So my email last night to staff that was responded to today, I asked, when it comes to transportation, how does the transportation coming out of Pembroke Pines any differ from any of the other municipalities that are going to the same place? So what I received from Mr. Bailey was really good information, but my colleagues don't have that. And it's, and it's a lot, it's very detailed information, I think is important, and certainly you can't share it because that would be, the information could have gone out ahead of the meeting to, through the city manager without including my name in there. But Mayor, I think that the item, I can support a table for clarification. I'm uncomfortable with the process. I'm uncomfortable with the, with the current perception that if the City of Pembroke Pines goes out on the street and you have a sealed bid, then once everything comes out of the envelope, then you can renegotiate. That's not who we are.
And let's find out where we are.
That's not what we do.
Let's find out where we are. City Clerk, call the rule for the table, please.
To when?
It wasn't in a motion.
It said the next meeting.
It wasn't in a motion. City Clerk, call the rule, please.
Commissioner Good? Point of order?
On what?
Commissioner is asking, when will this item come back?
It's a motion to the table.
To, I'm hearing that it's to the next meeting, the maker of the.
That was not in a motion.
Then, if I may.
If you want to make a qualification to that? Commissioner Good?
It would be table until the next meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a, you don't have to second, it's okay. Table, this is second, all right? City Attorney, City Clerk, call the rule.
Commissioner Good?
Come here, not working. How you doing? It's not working.
Commissioner Casillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Sipyl?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
What, what?
On the table, Mayor.
On the table? Yes. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make up, just a point? Waste Pro was good enough to extend their current contract to tomorrow, but this is a service that happens every other day practically. Is it, are we able to ask the gentleman from Waste Pro, since he's still here, if he can extend his contract?
He asked the city attorney.
Uh, City Attorney?
Well, interesting question, Miss Mayor and Commissioner, because if the contract has expired, you can't truly revive a dead contract legally. However, from the standpoint of an existing service being provided by an existing provider who has control over the service and the product, it would not be inappropriate, given the nature of that issue, for the commission to engage in this discussion, as Mr. Bailey suggested, so long as Waste Pro is willing to provide the service, at least until February 1, when the commission can reconsider its position this evening and reopen that conversation.
Correct. Okay.
Do we need that on the record?
Yes. Can we get Waste Pro to ask? That's a good question.
Hold on. Jim, is that clear?
Yes. Mr. Rivera? Ken Rivera, yes, absolutely. Until everything is, you know, our intent is to continue the service until the final decision is made. Simple as that.
All right?
Yep.
Everybody through that?
On the same condition that we are currently.
All right. We are now, we'll table it to the next meeting. Okay, thank you all. Good discussion. First reading ordinance, City Attorney?
Number 18. Yep. Yes, Mayor, the writ's resolution, if you will.
I didn't touch it. I've got my hands on my.
Item 18, for the record, is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2023 R-01, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, authorizing and directing the signing of the submission of a grant application supporting documents and assurances to the Florida Department of Transportation, that's the FDOT, and the acceptance of a grant award from the FDOT and the purchase of two vehicles and/or equipment of grant funds, directing the appropriate officials to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the intent of the resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item 18 on the floor, Mayor, thank you.
Move by Commissioner Casillo, second? Second by Commissioner, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Sipyl, discussion. Hearing none, call the rule, please.
Commissioner Casillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Sipyl?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz? Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
For the record, Mayor and Commissioner, that permit number is number 3810.
Thank you, City Attorney. Run 19, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission, number 19 reads as follows. It's a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2023 R-02, which is also a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending the city's action plan for community development block grant, that's the CDBG program, for the year 2019, by reallocating funds for public facilities and improvements, directing the city clerk to submit the amended action plans to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizing the city manager and city administration to execute all required documents, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Move by Commissioner Casillo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sipyl, discussion. Hearing none, call the rule, please.
Commissioner Casillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Sipyl?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Number's 3811, Mayor and Commissioner, for the record.
Thank you, item 20, please.
Thank you, Mayor, item number 20. Also a resolution, proposed resolution number 2023 R-03, is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the amended local housing assistance plan for fiscal years 2022 through 2025, authorizing and directing the appropriate city officials to execute any necessary documents and certifications required by the state, authorizing the submission of the local housing assistance plan for review and approval by the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. and approval by the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, providing for conflicts, severability, and providing for an effective date. Item twenty on the floor, mayor, thank you.
Move. Move by Commissioner Castillo?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stifle, discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment that it, it's good to see that these, uh, these levels are increasing so that, uh, more people can participate. Thank you, sir.
Good, good point, good point. Discussion? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Stifle?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yeah.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And the number for the record, Mr. Mayor and commission, is thirty-eight twelve.
Thank you, sir. Item twenty-one.
Thank you, mayor and commission, item twenty-one is referred to as the following. It's discussion of possible action to approve the third amendment to the contractual services agreement for school crossing guard services with Kemp Group, that's K E M P, International Corporation, increasing the annual cost by hundred six thousand seven thirty-four point sixty, which is an increase of approximately fourteen point five nine percent, for a total annual amount not to exceed eight thirty-eight one fifty-six point twenty, and that's on the record for consideration, item number twenty-one, third amendment. Thank you, mayor and commission.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Tell them.
Move by Commissioner Stifle, discussion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Good, discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo? Why is this on regular agenda? City attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I can address that.
City attorney?
The, the reason we took it off consent is because after the request was made by Kemp to increase the, the, uh, costs for school crossing guards additionally, then they came back after everything was prepared, and they asked for this to be retro to, uh, August first of twenty twenty-two. Um, this is, I believe, their, the second request, and we just wanted it, uh, to be fully disclosed that, uh, this is, uh, a substantial increase in the amount that, on an annual basis, so we're paying up to close to eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, uh, per year for school crossing guards.
Do you, are you, are you recommending approval?
We need to have school crossing guards. I believe after this is over, I think our intent is that we should go back out for bid.
Oh, okay. We're in discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Good?
Yeah, so, I mean, this, this rate, though, is, uh, cause it seems like they're trying to match the, um, well, how do you say, rate versus rate? Um, I mean, there are thirteen eighty-six, I guess, is what they're asking for now?
They're asking, uh-
Oh, twenty twenty, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're asking you to go up to twenty dollars and twenty-six cents per hour. That doesn't mean that the, the crossing guard, I believe, gets that amount of money, is that correct, Mark? And we've been looking at other cities and what they pay, and it, it's, uh, there's some that are lower, and there's some that are higher.
Good evening, Mark Gomes, uh, procurement director. Um, yes, that is correct. Uh, my understanding from the current company, they started paying their, uh, school crossing guards fifteen dollars an hour, uh, back in August of twenty twenty-two.
Any further questions?
Yeah, so, I mean, cause I'm sitting here looking at, uh, you know, a projection going out to twenty twenty-six, so, Mr. Manager, does this mean that we're going to be anticipating additional increases in, in future years then as well, too?
Manager?
I, I believe so, and I think their projection was based on state law, that they wouldn't have to start paying fifteen dollars an hour to twenty twenty-six, and I believe the amount of money they're paying now is, uh, more so than what they anticipated. It's very difficult to find workers, and that's one of the other issues, too.
Further discussion? All right, city clerk?
Commissioner Stifle?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yeah.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, report to the league, I have nothing, Commissioner Stifle?
Um, no, sir, I'm not at this point.
Manager?
No items, mayor.
City attorney?
Yes, mayor, one item, please, if I can, for the record, as you know, the city of Pembroke Pines is currently a plaintiff in the litigation matter against Con Edison, which is the company that the city engaged several years ago with regard to roof installations and certain roof savings based upon the kind and type of insulation. We're currently in the circuit court of Broward County, under state law, uh, I need your advice, under chapter two eighty-six, which is the sunshine law, uh, I would ask that you by motion authorize, uh, ourselves to engage in a, in a closed-door session, uh, required by state statute under chapter two eighty-six, uh, either at the, before either the first meeting in February, February the first, or February the fifteenth, along with the city's outside special counsel, uh, Jeremy Springheart, um, who is, who is representing us in the matter. We are currently in the middle of some discovery issues, I do need your advice and direction regarding potential cost and expense of litigation, which is what the statute, um, requires me to ask, and I need that direction in a, uh, closed-door shade meeting as provided for by state statute.
So move, move by Commissioner Castillo? Second?
Second.
Second with Commissioner Stifle, discussion?
Yes, mayor, uh, city attorney, how much time?
Who's that?
Vice mayor.
Vice mayor?
City attorney, how much time do you need?
Uh, less than one hour.
Uh, city manager, uh, can you project, um, do you have an idea what the agenda may, workload may look like on the first? I know we can't do the fifteenth, but-
I don't have any idea at this point. Right now, they've been running relatively, um, easy, uh, but certainly we can look at that meeting if we're going to have a closed-door session an hour before the meeting.
Well, I was, I was going to suggest, mayor, if, if, if you're not opposed, if we can have a shade session after the meeting on the first.
It can be before or after, whatever, whatever works.
I prefer after the meeting, on the first.
Just the record, if I can, to the vice mayor.
Vice mayor, we can't hear a word you're saying. I don't lie, I'm mic'd, I can't hear.
I asked the city, I asked the city attorney if the shade session could be done at the end of the February first meeting.
We didn't discuss a shade session. What he was discussing was an item to vote on. City attorney, I'm confused with shade session.
All right, mayor, let me, let me rephrase. This is a litigation matter, currently in litigation, our special counsel is in Orlando, uh, or thereabouts, he would be able to dial in for the, uh, closed-door shade meeting. There would have to be a public meeting to a private session to a public meeting. We do need your direct direction, we do need your advice under state statute, there are items that need to be discussed, uh, we are currently moving through the discovery process, I don't want to go into any detail on the record tonight in public, I have the right, as you do, to have the luxury of a private session. That's what it's all about.
Everybody clear? Okay, city clerk?
Mayor, is that for February first?
The date's February one, that's the day we're looking at, and Mr. Springheart will, will make himself available.
Okay.
Okay, everybody clear?
Is it after the meeting or before the meeting?
I prefer after.
After the meeting.
City clerk?
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Stifle?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Mayor and commission, thank you for the opportunity of presenting the center closed-door, uh, shade meeting as required by state statute, I appreciate the direction, thank you very much.
Thank you, city attorney, always good information.
That's all I have, mayor, thank you.
Vice mayor, I have an item.
Go ahead, mayor.
Uh, I'd like to discuss a possible action to approve a co-sponsorship and funding for a table of ten at the Broadness Metropolitan Planning Organization, second state of the regional awards, uh, on Saturday, February second, twenty twenty-three, an amount of three thousand dollars, and the first one was outstanding, and over a thousand people showed up, so I'd like to see a motion on that.
Uh, sure, mayor, do we, the second of February is a Tuesday, do we have the right date in there?
It's a Tuesday?
I'm sorry, Thursday, rather.
Information I got is February second.
That's, that's a Thursday, it says Saturday in the, on, in the agenda. Is it on, is it on Saturday, Saturday, the fourth?
I can't hear a word you're saying. Okay, well, it's this?
Your, your item says Saturday, not Thursday.
Well, why does it say?
I don't know.
February second here.
You have to look before that.
All right.
Mr. Mayor-
I have a, I have a, Saturday, this is it.
Saturday, February something.
We'll give it, if it passes, we'll give it a corrected for you.
The, the agenda says it's February second.
Okay, all right, I'll get the information if it passes.
All right, any discussion, uh, it sounds like the mayor's making a motion for us to fund it and the date to be announced.
Second, that.
The, the second, uh, Commissioner Good, discussion on the item, public, seeing none, uh, call the roll, please, city clerk.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Stifle?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you all, I wish you could all attend, it's gonna be a great meeting. Yes, Commissioner Stifle?
Yes, uh, we're going into whole business.
Okay.
Okay, I have a couple things I want to bring everybody up to date on traffic, we've made some huge improvements, and I first want to, and I have some information here that I am going to give to the city clerk, and ask that she share it with, with, with you all. Um, specifically at the west campus, our west corner campus, uh, as you know, we did a lot of parking renovations there, and that queuing has improved greatly there now, they can queue an additional hundred fifty to hundred seventy vehicles, which has really helped, um, uh, that whole area out there in Catata, actually, we've been working with them still on sidewalk and barrier, um, curbing, and I believe that's both been taken care of now.
Push.
They have, the homeowners have one last item, I believe, um, to decide whether they're going to put a chain or put a, a hedge on a particular area. Um, Franklin Academy, as you all know, we had some issues with that, and we are still working with them on the actual agreement, their site plan agreement, um, and, and how we can deal with them queuing vehicles off of the road and onto their own property. Some of this has been made, um, and I hate to say more difficult, because that's not really the right words, but difficult because of the Marjory Stone and Douglas and the, and the school, um, security issues on open campuses, closed campuses, so we're trying to work with them to see how we can come through on that. Um, I'm very happy to tell you that the gates on Fourth Street at two oh two and two oh eight are up and functional, people have been, um, using them. Um, I'd like to thank, um, all the staff that's been out there, Mr. Jude has been out there, uh, making sure that if there were, if there were any problems, uh, because some homeowner, some of the homeowners out there had not yet signed up to get their, um, their, uh, their stickers, their stickers for that, um, and so he's been out there getting them all signed up, and just making sure that the gates are working. The only thing that's left to be done on that is the signs that have been ordered because the original sign had a school time on it, and the schools changed their time, so, um, that's in the works as far as being, being there. We're still working with, um, city engineer and, and, um, city staff on two hundred and eighth avenue in front of Malibu Bay, uh, to be able to add some additional, um, a proposal, city engineer's working on a proposal for that, adding some additional queuing lanes and some additional turn lanes, which will yet again help that whole area out there, um, not only with, with the Somerset and all that, with, with West Broward being able to move, and specifically the folks in Malibu Bay to be able to get in and out of their communities, um, as they need to. Chapel Trail Elementary, as you all know, that was a, a, a problem, and we thought that perhaps we'd be able to use of the school, um, the city's soccer field parking there, and as it turns out, it turned out to be not, that was not a good plan for there, but the no parking signs that were put up on the west side of one ninety-sixth Avenue have helped immensely, we no longer have folks, um, walking across the street to get, um, to get into the school, um, and just holding their hands up for traffic to stop. Um, Lakeside Elementary, I provided you all previously with some information, um, for that whole community, there were a huge amount of, of changes that were made out there through the city of Broward County and Efton, to make it a much safer, um, uh, area out there for, uh, the cars, the students, the pickup, and everything else. I know at our last, um, uh, several of our meetings, we talked about, um, with traffic, specifically school traffic, you know, busing and how all of that can, uh, perhaps play into, I know at one point, there was a discussion about, um, I think, what is it called, walking school bus, and, um, I found it interesting that in our master traffic plan, there was a question, a survey that came out of some of that, and the question was, would you be interested in learning more about the walking school bus program? And about seventy-five percent of the folks said, no, I live too far from the school to walk, and then some said, I live within walking distance from the school, and, and that means that perhaps they would be interested. So we are going to still continue to talk to the school board, continue our conversations with them about the whole two-mile radius, and see how that plays into perhaps some changes that might come about, where in fact, uh, more walking, um, or additional buses, uh, might be able to be put into play, which, again, generally will help traffic, um, you know, all, all over for all of us. So, um, and the last thing, mayor, about transportation is, I just want to thank, uh, Mr. Sam and everybody that, you know, we had a presentation here on the master traffic plan, and moving forward with that, I see that a lot of good things that are happening and will be happening with that, and I think we're, uh, moving in the right path, mayor, um, on that. So I'm finished with that on traffic, and I have one last thing, mayor.
Go ahead.
Under, this would be under new business.
Go ahead.
You know, I, I came, uh, before you and you guys all ended up supporting some time ago, having our, um, youth advisory board, and that is actually in the works, we're starting to reach out, uh, Mr. Dodge and, um, Ms. Horns and Ms. Bonkowski actually presented some stuff, a, a letter that will be going out to all the principals, we'd like to get it organized, um, the remainder of this school year to actually start into action, uh, be set up, start action in, in next, um, next school year, uh, to, to really, to really work, so.
So what do you need?
Huh?
What do you need?
Um, nothing at this point, but, but we will be coming back to one thing.
Great information, thank you very much.
One, uh, so, let me finish, mayor.
Oh.
So, so having, having looked at that, then I started getting some questions from some folks, and said, we really think that this year's advisory is pretty cool, um, but what about our seniors? So I am going to start what I'm calling a senior advisory committee, and it will not be a, uh, sanctioned by the commission, it will be my own committee, and where we will deal with, um, uh, some of our, not, not just our, our condo associations, but any of our, through our senior center, and I know they have it, their own senior advisory, but that's only specifically for issues that deal with the senior center, and not the community and, uh, as a whole. So, um, I will be, um, coming back with you on a start on, on the date for the senior, um, advisory committee.
Okay.
That's my new-
Mayor?
City attorney, can I start my own committee?
You can.
Yeah.
Yes, you can.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Castillo?
Yes, on the traffic, um, Mr. Sam, want to remind, I wanted to remind you, now that these gates are operational, we had commentary from, I think it was Preservis Estates and also Pasadena, too, that the, um, and it's unfortunate that the, that, that the gate was delayed so long, because I know we had the, uh, engineering master plan people, I don't know if they're still on board or not, but the concern was that once the gate went